Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 3, 2017, meeting of the Middletown Board of Education. And just as an aside here, our next meeting will be August 17 at 6:00 PM at the Middletown Board of Education office. So it'll be 6:00 PM, the next meeting, Middletown Board of Education office. Mr. Cosenzo, will you lead us in a pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Bishop Williams, could you do the mission statement, please?
Mission of the enlarged city, thank you. Mission of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities and a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you so much. Ms. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the regular minutes of the July 20, 2017, meeting?
So moved.
Second. You have that? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next, we come to recognitions, announcements, and community reports. What do we have to do here? Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Let's see. Approve the reorganization minutes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Approval of the reorganization. Mrs. Clark saying no?
No.
Am I looking at the wrong one? I'm confused enough. You want to confuse me?
I'm sorry. I just pulled it off.
That's okay. Thank you, anyway.
I thought it was on my screen.
See, now we'll go to recognitions and announcements and community reports. And before we go on, for the new people here, we go through this agenda, but we have the documentation at least a week before, and we ask any questions that we want of the administrative staff, and we discuss these things. So this is why it appears it's not rubber stamp, believe me. We've had some rather tough discussions at times. So let's start with recognitions. If my memory is correct, Mr. Cosenzo wanted to go first. Since we're down at that end of the table, Paula? Okay. That's fine. Mr. Gomez.
Recognition.
Recognition. Go ahead. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Misses Tobiasin.
Hi.
Okay. Bishop Williams.
I do want to, I want to recognize real fast the, on Tuesday, from what I understand, was the night out against crime nationwide, and from what I understand, Middletown had a wonderful, a wonderful event, as well as town of Walk Hill. So kudos to all those that are involved. Also want to recognize real fast the, a program that is put out by the Parks and Recreation Department of City of Middletown. It's called, it's a leadership program which only incoming freshmen are allowed to enter into. My son, being incoming freshman into Middletown, was involved in this program, and they've had, they've been taught, have different speakers come in from different areas. They've been talking about decision-making, so many different things that's going to help them as they, as they step into a new season of their lives. And I believe that they finished up on Wednesday with a canoeing trip down to Delaware. So there's a pair, there's a pair of completely soaked $200 Jordans at my house that I'm not too happy about, but at the end of the day...
But they had fun, right?
Yeah. They had fun at the end of the day, but he's not getting on new Jordans this year, so it's, it's okay. So that's all.
I bet he will when...
He ain't getting it from me. He gonna get it from his mama.
When all is said and done. Okay, I guess it's my turn now.
Well, wait. You're done, Bobby.
And, you know, I saw an interesting, an interesting poem came to mind. I looked it up, and it was "A Walrus and the Carpenter" by Lewis Carroll. And it was from the book Through the Looking Glass. And one paragraph in this, "The time has come," the walrus said, "to talk of many things, of shoes and ships and sealing wax, of cabbages and kings, and why the sea is boiling hot and whether pigs have wings." So I'm not going to talk about cabbages and kings or why the sea is boiling hot. What I'm going to talk about right now, and Mr. Gomez, you can put me on timer, but I want to say that Pastor Williams, I know, will let me have a little time, and Mr. Pierre said he would let me have his minutes. Mrs. Zuck, I checked with her and Mrs. Knapp, so...
So what's, is it half an hour?
Could be. I don't think it's going to be, though.
But you see, it's on the folks.
You know, there's been talk this week, and a lot of Facebook chat, and article in the high school, article in the Middletown Times Record about salaries and about feeding our students. Well, first of all, the facts are wrong, and we reached out to the newspaper, and I'm sure it was an accident. The salaries aren't stated. But be it as it may, I went to our publication on board. That's our, sort of the quote, the bible of the school board individuals, the school board members. Let me go on here. As far as salaries go, superintendent of schools Peru, New York, looking for a new superintendent, somebody just coming in with experience, but no experience in the district, $175,000, 50 to 175. And Peru, I believe, is up right near the Canadian border. I'm not positive, though. I think it is. This superintendent has been here for 14-plus years, and our administrative team has been on staff for many, many years. Mr. Del Maro, Mr. Scott, and the superintendent, and Mr. Tuttle has been with us for a while. So that's one thing. Superintendent of schools Sarasota Springs City School District, 6,300 students. A great, a great benefit package there, and I checked in the, in the salary, minimum salary, minimum, $175,000. That's somebody just coming in without any years of experience in the district. Okay? I can go on and on, but you get the idea. I mean, I've been associated with the district for many years, not only as a board member, but as, as an employee. My, our family's been associated since 1900. I've never seen a better superintendent and an administrative team. I'm not just saying that and blowing smoke. Because if I didn't think the person was good, I would not have voted for the contract, believe me. Just continuing on for a minute. If you don't, if you don't think I'm accurate, look at the building you're in. The superintendent managed, has managed approximately $190 million of construction in this district. Look at what's going on in all our schools. Our schools are, we're conducting not only preventative maintenance, but construction in some of our buildings. The high school, we're opening the third floor. It's going to be a technological toward the fourth, I believe, and we have many, many programs. Other than that, the superintendent has been invited to the White House on two occasions. Middletown is designated by a number of agencies as a school to visit. I could go on and on. Believe me, you wouldn't have had all the programs we have now if it wasn't for this administration team led by Dr. Eastwood. You wouldn't have had that sports stadium, no cost to the taxpayers. You wouldn't have had a viable strings program, which he pushed for, a literacy program, personalizing education, on, on, and on. I can go. You know, you get what you pay for in life, believe me. And it was brought home to me many, many decades ago. My dad was in the, one of the things he did, he was a, he was on the faculty of the Middletown High School, but he was also dealt in antiques and fine arts. As a young man, I came back one day, I says, "I'm going out in the truck and get some things." I came back with a load of items. I said, "Look what, I paid for this." He says, "You bought junk." So we didn't buy junk when we hired the superintendent. I sat in on those interviews, that interview committee, and I know, I'm not saying the people weren't good who applied, I won't say that, but the superintendent, this superintendent interviewed with excellence, believe me. So enough said on, enough said on that. Now, food, talking about food, I said I would talk about food also. You know, I can understand why somebody might be opposed to a person's salary. I can understand. If you don't agree with a salary, that's fine. I have just explained why I agree with it. But to say that we should not be giving free food to our kids, that is, that's beyond the pale, really. And we have, in this district, 76.8% are eligible for free reduced lunch. 56% of our students are classified as at-risk, food insecurity. 24% of our students participate in the breakfast program, and we project that to grow by 50%. Another benefit of the, of free food, you know, you read articles, and if you, kids have a good breakfast and a good lunch, they're better learners. This program, again, no cost to the taxpayers, it's going to prevent meal shaming also. In some cases, food has been removed from students because they have a tab. They have to pay, they have a bill, and we're not going to permit that anymore. You know, the two people in food service, Ms. Delaney and Mrs. Burr, Ms. Burr, have worked very, very hard and have spent many hours doing this. I can see the precise way they're handling this program. So continue on with the program. It's an excellent program, and it's going to have excellent results, and we expect to report on that, the program. Before I'm through, I'd like to give a shout-out to one of the members here, Mike Warden. Mike will be leaving us soon for a career in law enforcement, and congratulations to you, Mike, on, on that. Mike, just remember me.
I just want the card.
I need a card and a sticker, please.
There you go. Everybody's going to be extra good to you. And we have somebody who's interning with Mike, Ben. Good luck. And of course, we have Russ over there and Bill Wilcox. I also want to give a shout-out, congratulations, and best of luck to you. I also, and Mark's hiding back there. Mark's a little steady there. Why, I'm sorry, Mark. As a matter of fact, he corrected me. I forgot to say when the next meeting was. At the last meeting, he properly chastised me. I also like to give a shout-out to Tom Scott and also Ken Eastwood. You know, how busy, no matter how busy they are, they have time for the smaller items, one of which, the Middletown Humane Society needed some lockers. And we have lockers that are being taken out of some of our buildings. And you might say, "That's easy." No, because technically, the contractor owned the lockers. That was included in the price, the price of the steel and so on. That was all factored in. But Tom and Ken managed to get lockers for the Humane Society. It was a good gesture. And Tom Scott's not here tonight, but by gosh, you know, he's a professional engineer, and he's been just the main, one of the mainstays of this construction project. So I could go on, but I'm done. I think you get the gist of what I'm saying. I think Bishop Williams wants to say something now.
I just want to say, I'm going to give a big shout-out to Ms. Tracy Sorrentino, our principal at the high school. Big shout-out to her. I want to thank her because two weeks ago, my graduating class from the Middletown School District, the class of 1982, party crew 82, they call themselves, not me, but we had our 35th class reunion here in the city of Middletown, a wonderful turnout. And Ms. Sorrentino, on that Saturday, took it upon herself to meet us at the high school and to take many of our classmates on a tour of the high school, and, and I want you to know that they were absolutely amazed and, and completely, completely in awe of what Middletown has done. And so my classmates can't stop singing the praise of the Middletown School District, not just because we're graduates and we grew up here, but because of what the school district has become. And so I want to thank, thank you so much for allowing us and taking us at your own busy time to come to take us on that tour, and we greatly appreciate it. So big ups to you. Thank you.
Let's continue on with the personnel. All right. Well, I think I'll do the personnel first, and then I'll go opportunity to address the board, because we have people here, and then we'll have the opportunity to address. There's no objection? Can we approve the personnel items, 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, 3E? May I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Perino? Oh, discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like 3C pulled out, so that we vote on that. It is administrative.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's pull 3C out, so we'll, motion to approve 3A, 3B, 3D, and 3E. Motion approved?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Bishop Williams and Mr. Gomez. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we will do 3C administrative as per Mrs. Tobiasin's request. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we have the introduction of personnel. Thank you, Mr. Del Maro.
Thank you, Mr. Perino, members of the Board of Education. As always, it's a great pleasure to introduce new faculty and administrative members to our family of educators. And I'd like to begin this evening with the high school and ask Mrs. Sorrentino, Mr. Norville Connell, Mr. William Adano U., and so on, Ms. Lauren Durr, Mrs. Acevedo, and Mr. Whitaker to join Mrs. Sorrentino up at the podium, so that she can introduce the three new members of our administrative team. Mrs. Sorrentino and team. For those who may have had a little difficulty in the enunciation of last meeting.
Good evening, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Perino, members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to stand with my entire team. Tonight, we welcome three new members to our family. Joining us in House Four, we have Mr. Ryan Judge. Mr. Judge joins us from Millbrook, New York. He has experience on the high school and middle school level. He has taken a deep dive into the Middletown High School culture and summer school already, learning his students and all the work that entails in being in Middletown. And he tours the building every day to learn all the rooms. Congratulations, Ryan. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to once again thank the members of the board, the administration, and all of the community members that are here at tonight's meeting. I am beyond thrilled to be joining the Millbrook community. I knew, I knew I was going to do that.
That's all right. I did it for two years.
Right?
Two years.
One of the reasons that I was personally, I was personally attracted to Middletown is that I, my philosophy as an educator directly aligns with the philosophy of the current administration and the board. I'm a firm believer in the statement that high expectations are meaningless without rich opportunities. I always felt that as a classroom teacher. I always wanted learning to be experiential for, for children. I believe that's where the real learning occurs. And I, while I'm about to finish up my first month here as an employee, I, one of the things that makes me very happy every day is that I truly believe that's not just on paper, but that is living and breathing in the school every day, as every meeting that I sit in, whether it be with a teaching faculty, with other administrators, so on and so forth, that conversations are not, "How do we make this problem go away?", but "What do these students need?", regardless of what it means for the rest of our day. And that makes me leave here every day knowing that this is a place that I want to be. So thank you very much.
Ryan's our shy speaker. And joining us in House Two, Mr. Omar Perez. Come along, Mr. Perez. Omar joins us from New York City, where he has been acting as a dean. He has both special education and E&amp;L background. We're very pleased that Omar has moved to Orange County and is joining our community. Omar?
Thank you, Principal Sorrentino. First and foremost, I would like to thank everyone, as I'm extremely eager and excited to get started and be a part of this learning community, the administrative staff, the superintendent and assistant superintendent. It was truly a pleasure sitting down with both you gentlemen. As I let you know, I definitely did my homework and researched, not necessarily you as an individual, and your family, and your address, but I'm only kidding. Your philosophy on education, it means a lot to me, as Ryan said, to be a part of a community that, and a team that shares in the beliefs and the convictions that I have. And one of the things that I learned in grad school, early on, as far as when it comes to the teaching profession, is that you have to teach the whole student. And by the whole student, we're involving not just, you know, the numbers and the kids who are coming into the classroom, but the baggage that they bring in with them, the skills that they bring in with them, the motivation, the fears, their families. We're taking everything into account, and joining a district whose vision is literally to focus on personalized education as opposed just to standardize is a breath of fresh air for me. So I really am excited. Principal Sorrentino and Mr. Whitaker, Tracy, they've, they've, they've made me feel very welcome, although I have yet to even have my first official day. But I'm very eager and happy to know that that day is Monday, and my family's equally just as excited, although I come from the Bronx. We live now in Monroe, a couple towns over. We've been here up north for six years, and to be a part of this Middletown district makes me feel like I've, I've accomplished and met something that is bigger than myself and continues my commitment to a certain demographic and students who have challenges that I embrace and look forward to helping them conquer and overcome. So thank you all.
And our newest member, who has been with us, actually. Mr. Anthony Williams joined us last year as a guidance counselor in the high school. He comes to us with the background of working with at-risk students, partnering with them, crafting behavior plans, really taking that one-on-one approach to bring them to the successful path. Anthony had done that in New York City prior to us and in his role as a resident advisor upstate at the collegiate level. Anthony is now officially joining us as the dean of at-risk students, working with those various students that he has a specialty working with. So welcome, Anthony.
How's it going, everybody? I want to thank all of the board members. I want to thank Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Del Maro for this opportunity. Also, I want to let everybody know, I'm very, very, very excited about this opportunity. This past year, working in the Middletown School District has really been a great experience. I built a lot of relationships, not only, you know, at the, at the district level, but also in the community with students and parents. I'm a firm believer that success is measured by bringing others along, and I believe in, I believe that personalizing education is the key to actually helping all of our students achieve success. So thank you all, and I'm looking forward to this year. This wonderful team behind me has really embraced me and made me feel welcome, and I'm excited to bring my expertise, my guidance background to the table and help each and, each and, each and, help each of our students reach success in and out of the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a complete team.
All right.
You know, just a comment. I believe we have an exceptionally strong administrative team at the high school, exceptionally so. And as I said in executive session, the reputation of this district rises and falls what happens in the high school. We don't run the district. The board doesn't run the district, but we want to see that this district runs well. We have, we have added administration at the high school. We have added a third floor to the high school. Now it's up to the people on staff to see that this building runs well. We're not going to accept anything less either. So thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. As we continue our, our introductions, I'd like to ask Alisa Schreiner to come up to the microphone to introduce the newest member to our middle school program that certainly supports our capstone program at the high school.
Good evening, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Del Maro, President Perino, and Board of Education. It is with great pleasure that I'd like to introduce Tara Merkel. Tara is coming to us from the Bronx, where she has been since 2012. She has her bachelor's degree in childhood education, one through six, and a special education degree for her masters, including a concentration in mathematics. This year, she'll be joining us as our sixth grade special education teacher. And it's with great pleasure that I welcome Tara. Thank you to the superintendent.
Thank you to the superintendent, Dr. Eastwood, Mr. Delmore, and President Perino. And thank you to the board. I'm very excited to be part of Middletown.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Although there are several names on the appointment tonight, we do have our last introduction, Mr. Daniel Schwartz. I'd like to ask you to come up to the microphone. Daniel will be joining us at Presidential right here as one of our elementary teachers. Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you very much. Everybody, personal. Last year, I worked in Middletown as a substitute, mostly here at Presidential Park. I also had a short lead at Maple Hill towards the end of the year. Now, I'm very excited to start here this year. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you and welcome. I believe that's all the introductions this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Delmore.
Well, thank you. You have to come to all the board meetings. Thank you for the help. Now, upon, I'm sorry, Mrs. Tobias, and I missed that, but now we're going back to the opportunity to address the board. And if you'd like to come up to the podium and address the board, please sign in. Comments limited to four minutes. And we don't engage in dialogue. If the administrators would like to answer a question, so be it. If not, one of the administrators will get back to you either at the next meeting or by phone. Thank you. Who wants to come up and address the board? Any takers? Going once, twice? Any other bids? Go on. Thank you. Thank you for the help. Have a good evening. The next item on... We're trying. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. And I believe we're going to have a...
As we've kind of had conversations about and I think with the public and the board have seen over the last six months, 12 months, is an increased attention to supporting our students in a variety of different ways. And many of those ways are through partnerships with community agencies, et cetera. What I'd like to do is have our nurse practitioner, Tiara Oliver, come up and begin the introductions about a partnership that we have with the Middletown Community Health Center and how we hope to improve the health care of our students in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Eastwood. Good evening, everyone. We are embarking upon a partnership with Middletown Community Health Center. So, I'm happy to introduce Taylor Marazik. She is the strategist for government planning and initiatives. And Isaiah Lopez, he works with community engagement with Affinity Healthcare. Thank you guys so much for... I don't normally need this. I'm very, very proud. I'm going to stand really far away then. I usually pass it. Okay, so I'm just going to talk about some health statistics. These statistics are from the Orange County Health Assessment from 2014 to 2017. You'll see some of the stuff is 2010 and a couple of years before. But if you don't know about that, it is an awesome resource. There's a lot of information in there, and there's a lot of stuff about children in there, too. So, I'm just going to read them, but I won't read them straight. So, 112, almost 113,000 children, adolescents of school age residing in Orange County. In Middletown, there's about 8,000. Preventive healthcare is very important for infants, children, and adolescents. And we know that they are missing their physicals. We work very closely with Affinity on data and doing outreach with those children. But they are one of the age brackets that really struggle with going to see their doctor regularly and having a relationship with their doctor and getting themselves healthy. I know for the health center, we have a large obesity rate. We have diabetes, even in the children. We have asthma, big asthma, you know? So, we focus on things like that. In Middletown, 81, almost 8,200 people. 31.9% of the population are Spanish-speaking. So, there are some barriers to getting healthcare and being able to get past the language barrier. Vulnerable groups within this population lack consistent access to primary and preventive healthcare. So, the students that are in your school district, we want to focus on these kids. And we want to create more primary care access to help them with preventive screenings and different things as they develop because these are core years for these kids. All right, so just a little bit about Middletown Community Health Center. We were established in 1977. So, this year, this Saturday, we are actually having our 40th birthday party. We are having a community event at Thrall Park downtown. So, if you have kids, come by. In 1999, we became a federally qualified health center through HERSA. HERSA is a federally, it's a government entity who, right, who gives out these grants to federally qualified health centers. But you have like 19 requirements. So, in 1999, we became a health center. We are the only FQHC in Middletown for primary care. We have 69% of the penetration of... Yeah, but it's really patients in the area. And compared to, I think, the next one, 17%, so there's a big gap. MCHC, we have expanded to nine clinical sites in Orange County. And we also have one in Milford, Pennsylvania. And we have multiple specialties with extended hours. We are PCMH-recognized. And here's just some stats from 2016. Almost 13,000 patients, 52,000 clinical visits. We have 49% Medicaid patients. It's a real high number. 8% Medicare, 13% uninsured. We focus on them a lot. We have 23% that have private insurance. And we have way more females than we have males. And that's because we have women's health and OB-GYNs. And our breakdown is 57% white, 11% black, African-American, and 32% Latino. All right, so here's Isaiah.
Good evening, Dr. Eastwood, members of the board, and members of the community. It is truly a pleasure to be addressing you this evening. My name is Isaiah Lopez again, and I am manager for Community Engagement for Affinity Health Plan. And first off, we are very excited to be partnering with the school district as well as Middletown Community Health Center embarking on this new program, this project. Just some high-level information. For almost 30 years, Affinity Health Plan has been offering New York State-sponsored free or low-cost health insurance coverage to New Yorkers who have Medicaid or no health insurance at all. The mission at Affinity Health Plan is to improve the health and well-being of its members, their families, and their communities in collaboration with primary care providers. That is where the partnership with Middletown Community Health Center comes into play. We work together very closely with them on certain projects, making sure that our members remain healthy, offering preventative care and programs to them. Taylor mentioned that on Saturday, we're having an event to the community, open to the community free. And what we do is we come alongside and we partner with them and make sure that we help them get our members out there, renew their coverage, as well as letting the Middletown community know that there are options out there for them to remain healthy and remain covered. Our managed care programs meet the need for coverage among people who are underserved, those who may find it hard to get healthcare for different reasons such as language barriers, social, and economic status, or other factors. Special outreach programs are available for specialized health needs. Thank you.
And one thing I'll add for Isaiah is, at the health center, our Medicaid population, because they're completely Medicaid-affinity, they're the largest Medicaid in this area. So, yeah, for us, it goes Affinity by far, then Fidelis, and then MVP. So, they're like the biggest ones. They have the most penetration in this area specifically.
One of the special projects that we embarked on earlier this year, during the month of May, nationally, we recognized nurses. One of the things that we did was we partnered with Middletown Community Health Center. And we went along all your schools, all the elementaries, middle schools. And at the high school level, we provided all your nurses with certificates just to recognize them. And that's just one of the projects that we look forward to collaborating on, making sure that the community is aware, that we recognize them, and other projects that are soon to come. Thank you.
So, the goals of the partnership. And just to be clear, we chose to partner with Middletown Community Health Center because they are the only FQHC in this area. So, instead of a sole proprietor, they receive government and state funding. So, it's kind of like no competition in that regard. So, that was the first choice line of reasoning for that. And then secondarily, like Taylor mentioned, Affinity is one of the largest managed Medicaid entities in this area. So, students can still have the opportunity to pick whatever managed Medicaid that they want to. That's by state law. But we're just offering this as a service, as a partnership. I don't know if any of you have heard of a school-based health center, but instead of that, we're partnering. So, we're giving our students the opportunity to access some of the same services, not being in the school itself, but as a partner. So, in line with that, the goals are reducing barriers to access primary care. We all know kind of what primary care is. Your physical, just your well visits, your GYN visits, all the things that kind of keep you healthy. And your provider will make sure that you're falling in line with those things. A lot of our students are not accessing those in ways that are appropriate according to medical guidelines. They also get quicker same-day sick visits. So, instead of saying, "Okay, I'm going to give you a paper referral and please have your mom, dad, grandmom take you to the doctor or your nurse practitioner or your physician assistant," we can offer them the opportunity to say, "Hey, you know, we do have some sick day appointments with Middletown Community Health Center. You're not obligated to go there, but you can if you choose." Dental access. I actually sat down with Dr. Eastwood and Michael Tuttle and showed them some unidentified pictures. So, I kind of cut out the students' top of their face and just showed some of the pictures of severe decay that our students have. And in 2017, one may think that that really shouldn't be the case. But the reality is we have a lot of undocumented people in this area. So, they're hesitant to access healthcare. And by doing so through the school, they're not asked additional questions. So, their children can then access dental care. And Middletown Community Health Center has a full, top-of-the-line dental van that they'll be bringing to our schools. Immunization access and administration. We can imagine how cumbersome that must be for administrators having to exempt students because they don't have their immunizations. That's something that we really should just kind of cut out of one of the barriers to education. So, they can, if they choose to, obviously would have to be with guardian permission, they can get their immunizations. And building community relationships. So, our anticipated services will fall right in line with our goals. Full dental services for each school. We'll start out slow and see how the response is. Point-of-care testing, throat cultures, which kind of piggybacks on point-of-care testing, immunization days at each school, partner during annual health fairs, like Taylor mentioned, and we'll expand upon that, too, as we assess need. Same-day appointments for issues as needed, as I discussed. Assistance in accessing healthcare insurance. And that's largely where Isaiah and his team will come in. So, one of the things with same-day appointments is she's talking about we're actually going to block the calendar... Oh, yeah, sorry. We're actually going to block the calendars for Middletown School. Like, there will be every day specific calendar, like, sections for appointments specifically for these schools. Thanks for clarifying. Okay, almost done here. Next slide. So, expected outcomes, it'll be a bill-only model for those of you who are thinking about costs. What they'll do is they will bill students who have insurance, if that is commercial insurance, managed Medicaid, or I don't even think with straight Medicaid is in play that much anymore, right? Some people, a minimal amount, have straight Medicaid. But New York State really wants it to be a managed Medicaid program so that they can measure health outcomes. So, that's kind of how we'll do it. And any student that doesn't have access to healthcare, we'll get them access. And if we just can't do, then it'll be like a pro bono visit. We'll start slow and grow and see how the response is. Improvements, we expect it to be in primary care access, dental care, immunization compliance, swifter follow-up on medical referrals. And obviously, if there's swifter follow-up on medical referrals, then that'll reduce absenteeism. And greater family compliance by offering partnership services. So, lastly, this is just a quote, and it came from a scholarly article that talked a little bit about how healthy students fare better in their educational journeys. And that's our slogan for health services, "Healthy Middies Matter." And it just says, "School health programs hold promise for improving academic outcomes for children." And obviously, educational journey is multifactorial. So, we're just looking to help in the healthcare aspect of it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Why don't we go around? Are there any questions? Why don't we go right around the table? Kevin?
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a question.
Okay.
You might have pointed out in your presentation, there may be many students, for different reasons, that come from households that do not have health insurance. It could be because of income. It could be about residency status and fear of coming out. It could be because their parents may be self-employed and do not have the normal health insurance availability of someone that works on payroll. How will you, are you planning to do outreach to our students through the schools to see where these families could apply to plan as Affinity, determine whether they're eligible? What's your plan for outreach?
Kind of like a marketing. So, there's several thoughts that I've had so far. One of those thoughts is during the central registration time period. And actually, we started that, just a little bit, we started kind of having a representative out there. But we want to do that on a larger scale. So, that'll be a way to capture a large number of students. Then, we'll start putting on the website. We'll put it on the bulletin boards. We'll send out a mail out packet to the students and families so they'll have the Affinity information right in there and the opportunity to enroll in the partnership and the services. So, that's some of the ways that we'll start. Another way that I have in mind, and obviously, this will be done collaboratively, is by having a health fair. Maybe that'll be done in the evening sometime. And we'll just, after we've kind of started getting the word out, we'll say, "We're having a health fair." We might talk about preventive tips for prediabetes and diabetes. We might talk about childhood obesity. And then, we'll have an opportunity for them to meet Isaiah and his team. But Isaiah and Affinity, they actually have, and he'll pass out some folders. They have information ready to go so that people are aware of how they can access healthcare.
Just one more question. In providing services, such as preventive services to the students, would you be also reaching out to the parents as far as disclosure or consent of something that's necessary?
Yes, we'll have to. So, Middletown Community Health Center has a whole packet. They have that all ready, and they'll refine it as needed for the partnership with Middletown Community Health Center and ourselves. So, that'll be a mass mailing, and it'll also go on our website. So, we have to have parent permission.
Thank you.
I think it was extremely informative.
Thank you.
No, but thank you again for your presentation, very concise. And Mrs. Gomez actually asked the questions that I had. So, thank you.
Mrs. Blomner?
This is so wonderful to hear. I think that we take such care of our children in Middletown to make sure that they're fed, to make sure that they are educated, to make sure that they are embraced, and they're safe. And now, we're making sure that they're healthy. And that's so important to the whole child. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crescendo?
Thank you. I wasn't paying attention to, I'm sorry. But I hope this isn't the same question. I was dialoguing.
I made a statement.
Oh, okay.
I said, "Thank you."
All right. Between the, all of our students, they're with the free lunch and breakfast and what have you, and then this program, we're obviously treating the entire student. That's amazing. Just, you know, helping them to be successful. Now, every student is automatically eligible for this program?
Yes, they are eligible, but they're not required to participate. Yes, they are eligible, but they're not required to participate.
Okay. Is there like a registration process or anything for them to get started with this?
Yes. As I spoke about, the packets will go out to all the students and families. That'll be like over time, because actually, Bill will have to help us with that. But it'll be a mass mailing, and they'll, you know, get to know about the partnership. We anticipate that, you know, a large number of students may want to participate in the partnership. However, you do have students and families that want to go to their own doctors or healthcare providers, so they can continue to do that.
Do you anticipate families being, you mentioned undocumented people in the community. Do you anticipate people that would be resistive, for whatever reason? And if that happens, do you have ways of reaching these people?
What do you have in mind as some?
A family that needs, students that need some health services, but for whatever reason, the family doesn't want to take part in this, they don't have anything else, that this is it. Is there more communication that could go on with the family?
Certainly. So, there are certain things that New York State mandates in order for students to come to school, immunization, health appraisals, those things have to be done. So, we do have some resistance with that now, and Barbara Canoria, one of our nurses, our long-term nurses, can speak to that. And that's when we get to the point where administrative staff has to exclude some students. So, yeah, so that's kind of tough. But we try to communicate as much as possible, and our school nurses do a really good job at, you know, really following up with families. So, to directly answer your question, yes, they can come in, they can speak with us about what the program entails, you know, I'm all ears, whatever concerns that a student or their parents or guardians may have, we'll talk about that. But really, this is to help and assist. We can't force the families to participate, but we really would encourage.
Thank you. Is there a copy of the PowerPoint available?
I can email it to you.
Would you please, I'd appreciate that.
Do you have ECSCM?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll email that to all of them, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay.
So, is that okay for you, or would you?
Mr. President, just one more question.
Just one more, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. I could tell myself as well. Yes, I just want to follow along the line, the wonderful question that Mr. Crescendo brought up. As part of your services for students, do you have any counseling or maybe mental health services for children or young people that have experienced possibly in the home domestic violence, which could be something that could affect them at school and their lives long-term?
Can I answer this?
Yeah, sure.
Because as a district, I think we take a different approach on how we're dealing with those issues. We're in the process of partnering with other agencies for those types of services, understanding that those specific types of things were under certain laws, if we have knowledge of, we have to take certain actions, and that we're also trying to look at the antecedents, for a better term, or some of those issues, if they are there, and then how to work with the families in mitigating some of those issues.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your presentation. It's really wonderful, and it's something that's so very much needed in this district and in this city and the community, so, thank you. I would hope at a later date, when you get things rolling, you come on back and give us a report on how it's received and what is being done, so, nice job.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Thank you very much for the partnering. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's see. We'll go on to approval of financial memorandum number four. Motion to approve that as presented. Do you have the first and second on that? Thank you. Any discussion? Any of the items, these were all on board docs, any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion to approve special service. Memorandum number three as presented. Mr. Vinnie and Bishop Williams. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We come to approval of impartial hearing delegate, John Perino and alternate Paula Blumenau. What did I do? I think I'm going to move you back. What'd I do? I skipped which one now?
Ten C.
Ten C, okay. Oh, the local assistance book, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the local assistance plan, SED, as presented. Mr. Crescendo, Bishop Williams. Any discussion on that?
Yes, John. I have a big concern over this, and I'm wondering, and first of all, I should preface it by saying, I apologize that I didn't email this, my concern, out. I'm wondering if the two schools that have been identified, if the board could be appraised of what the remediation plan will be. First of all, and I also want to thank Liz Bowler for her memorandum and what she has outlined, I mean, she gave us all of the schools, but I do have a particular concern on those two buildings identified. I don't know, Dr. Eastwood, do you want to?
Can I join Mr. Tobias with her concerns as well?
Yeah, so, I guess...
Could we hear from?
Well, the issue is you have concerns, I guess the question is, more specifically, what are your concerns, given the information that's been provided to you about these schools?
I guess I would like to hear from the administrators what their plan is for this coming school year.
And those administrators presented to this Board of Education this last spring the data and their plans to move forward. So, it's basically a replication of those plans which were reported to the Board of Education in the spring.
Well, I guess I'd have to ask my fellow board members, I'm not familiar with what they had outlined, so, is there a way, then, that we can get their plans for the coming school year?
Yes. Is there anybody else who needs those plans? We can put it on board docs? Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
No, I was just concerned, that's all.
Questions?
I would just ask that for the, maybe in the spring of this coming school year, we could get like a progress report to see what the, how the changes have been implemented come about.
Yeah, we would do that every year.
Do that, yeah. Thank you. Anything else? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimously carried. Now, we come to the approval of impartial hearing delegates, John Perino and alternate Paula Blumenau, and if I may read this. Motion to approve the resolution as presented, be it resolved that the Board of Education pursuant to number, section 200.5 of the Regulation of the Commission of Education, hereby delegate John Perino, board member, and alternate Paula Blumenau, board member, as representatives of the board who can appoint an impartial hearing officer in the event such a hearing is requested by the parent of a student with a disability, effective for the 2017-2018 school year. May I have a motion on this?
So moved.
I think, Kevin, Mr. Gomez, and second Bishop Williams. Any discussion? That was on board docs, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimously carried. Approval of the district-wide safety plan 2017-2018. Mr. Crescendo? Bishop Williams, and again, that was on board docs, as much as we can present. Some of that is proprietary information for obvious reasons. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimously carried. Next action item. Approve to waive the first and second reading and approve policy 5321. Motion to do that? Motion to waive the first and second reading? Mr. Crescendo? Mr. Blumenau? Mrs. Blumenau, I'm sorry. Superintendent Eastwood, would you like to discuss that?
Sure. This is a policy that in the past, it has to deal with the use of credit cards in the district, and in the past, we've had a policy that prohibits any credit card usage by the organization. Unfortunately, which I cannot explain why, but the State Education Department has contracted with a company in which they refuse to take other types of funding in which the district had opportunities to deal directly with the company, so our potential employees who had to be fingerprinted under the law could have those fingerprinting requirements met in our offices, and the information provided directly back to the school district in a very short turnaround. Unfortunately, this district, effective July 1st, is now required, they've dropped those other payment programs and are requiring only credit card exchanges for the processing of fingerprint identification and reporting back to school districts. So, in this case, in order to meet the needs of the school district and our employees to make it efficient, we're crafting a policy on credit cards that only allows the use of a credit card by both the Assistant Superintendent for Administration for the direct purpose and/or Personnel Director for the direct purpose only, to allow fingerprinting to be done in an effective and efficient manner, and so it meets the payment requirements of the agency that has been identified by the State Education Department. So, I don't know if I've been clear about it, they've changed agencies and processes away from other forms of payment and require only credit cards. Why the State Education Department did that, I do not know, but that was their decision in order to make sure that we get fingerprinting analysis and reports back to the district in a timely manner, so we can hire folks. We are asking the Board of Education to authorize the use of a credit card for the specific purpose, as I've said, to meet the financial requirements of this state education-approved agency. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, I just, I'm a little confused, and I apologize. Is a purchase order issued for these fingerprintings or not? I guess what I'm looking for, does it require just one signature, or is there a backup, is there a paper trail somehow, or are we giving sole delegation to either or of these people?
So, the answer to that question, I guess, is yes, we are giving the authority to them, understanding that the Director of Personnel, who manages this aspect of employment, would be the one who utilizes these services and manages the request for fingerprinting in each case.
And where would, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, so, in each case, we would have a record of the request and the associated price, which is very standard, it's constant.
And where would this credit card be kept?
Well, it would be kept in the, I would assume, in the treasurer's office.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Understand that the account, the account with the agency would have that credit card number, so as we make requests, we would use that credit card number on a consistent basis.
I know how stringent you were, we're about the use of credit cards, so...
Right. No, and that's what I'm saying, is I was not a happy camper when I saw this new policy, because I really didn't think that it made sense, first of all, because the type of account that we had, they had immediate payment anyway.
Yeah, sitting on the audit committee, I mean, I saw the paperwork that went through, and it had been a question at one time from the audit committee about this, you know, the fingerprinting, and it was all explained to us.
Right. So, you know, I wish we could not have credit cards in here, because I am always concerned about credit cards, but the restriction in the policy is so tight that it can only be used for this specific purpose and no other, and it gets monitored by both the Assistant Superintendent for Business and the Personnel Administrator, that we should have tight enough reins on it, that it'll be taken care of.
And the question...
Yeah. Mike was just telling me that the internal auditor always, every month, also reviews these expenditures.
The, yes, for Dr. Eastwood, the credit card our district will be issuing, will be, will be a credit card affiliated with a financial institution chosen by the school district, or one under the offices of the state?
No, it would be one that's chosen by the school district.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
All those in favor of waiving the first and second reading?
So moved.
Aye.
Next, number G, resolution to approve the, the resolution for a change to the salary structure of confidential secretary to the superintendent?
So moved.
Mrs. Tobias and Bishop Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number H, approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, the Director and Supervisors Association?
So moved.
Bishop Williams? Mr. Crescendo? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimously passed. Second opportunity to address the board. Anyone? Anyone in the... Okay, that's okay, all right, so we'll move on. Committee reports, and I want to say that Mr. Gomez has accepted the Chair of the Fair Funding Committee. Any committee reports?
First, I'll thank President Perino for that, and the members of the board, and look forward to working with the board members with respect to the Fair Funding Committee. As liaison to the City of Middletown, had the opportunity to attend the July 31st Common Council meeting, and there were two items there that would be of interest to our schoolchildren or the families. One, the Common Council approved the resolution appropriating funds for the creation of an after-school sports academy. That's under the auspices of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department. And also, the Common Council approved the resolution authorizing Mayor Joe DiStefano to sign a contract with the Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for purposes of installing a playground equipment at Maple Hill Park. So, those are two items that are of interest to parents, and that our children in the community could take advantage of. And also, to follow up with what Bishop Williams said at the beginning of today's hearing, a shout-out to, for the Night Out Against Crime, in particular, to one of our parents, older woman Kay Randkisun, who every year dedicates herself to making sure, along with other, the rest of the Middletown community, that it's an outstanding event. Thank you.
May I ask you, Mr. Gomez, where will the sports academy be held?
The sports academy, I believe, will be held at the site where the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department will be operating activities for the schoolchildren.
That's the old academy.
Yeah, that's something I think we could follow up further. I know that the Parks Department, from time to time, uses school facilities.
Thank you so much, and thank you for taking the Chair of the Fair Funding. Any?
Question on the Fair Funding? That committee is still needed, because I thought we had a discussion that was pretty prominent with our fellow board members from Warwick, and last year, there really wasn't any activity at all. So, I'm just, you know, curious whether, is there a committee, is there a countywide committee out there?
That, I don't...
Thank you.
And I thought that as part of the conversation, we were going to ask Andy, because he participates in it already, if he would keep us informed as part of the meeting.
Be the civilian.
Thank you.
So, you can interface with that committee?
Yes, and actually, I had spoken previously with him, so that's something I'm going to follow up with.
Roundtable, anything new and compelling? Hey, now, remember, our next meeting is August 17th, at the Middletown Board of Education Office at 6:00 P.M. Motion to adjourn the meeting? That was quick, Mr. C, Mr. Cresenzzo, and Bishop Williams. Meeting adjourned, see you August 17th. Thank you, Mrs. Clark, for the help, and thank you all the people in our tech area. Nice job.